Apologies, Mr Chair, I forgot to declare yesterday that I'm also the Secretary of the Araitui Maori Council and I've sent the information to London. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No. So with that, I'll move the committee amend the elected members' interest register and the attendant management plan seconded. Councillor Newell, thank you. All those in favour? Those against? That's carried. Part A reports. Welcome Dr Griffin to speak to the Itariki Museum Report to contributing local authorities, November to December 2017. We're all yours, sir.
Okay, Kiura, I must apologize, this report, I think, came to you at the last meeting, and there's a phasing issue between board meetings that we have at the museum and meetings of this committee. And unfortunately, the papers that I have to present have to go through my board first. So, we've got a board meeting next week, and that's why this is slightly dated. However, subsequent, I can update you on events subsequent to this period. Our Science Centre Tuhura opened on the fifteenth of, sixteenth of December, and it's been very successful. In fact, we've had over 25,000 people through, which is roughly 44% increase on what we had through Discovery World last year. So we're very pleased with that. That's especially pleasing, given the amazing weather that we had over the summer period. There's an anti-correlation between visitation to museums and sunny weather. So I'm sure Jennifer, my colleague from Toitu, will, will share my hate of the sun, because that means that attendances at the museum tend to be slightly less. So overall, our museum is running roughly six to eight percent down on last year's attendance, and we put that down entirely due to the fact that people want to go to the beach, rather than come through the museum on a sunny day. That being said, though, Tuhura has been a big success, and it opened on time, it opened on budget, and it's exceeded our expectations in terms of visitation numbers. And we're now, once we're through the summer period, with the schools coming back, we're starting to work on the education programmes. So from a, a broad perspective, it's been a big success, and you have to remember that the income that we generate from Tuhura is incredibly important in terms of offsetting the running costs of the museum. We tend to generate roughly 50% of the, the actual cost of operating the museum through the economic, sorry, the, the income that we generate. So, so far, it's been good. Tuhura's off to a good start, but it's up to us now to work hard to make sure it keeps going. And we were delighted today to host a visiting group from the Tourism, New Zealand Tourism Board, who I understand are visiting the whole city, but we took a group of them through this morning, and they seem to be quite excited by it. Outside of that, work continues. This year's our 150th birthday. The museum opened in August 1868, so we have a number of exhibitions and celebrations around that. We've got a big exhibition called EST, which stands for Established, and that will open later in the year, and it's a very exciting expedition, because it's going to have things like the biggest, the smelliest, the sexiest, the, the oldest, the newest, all to do with things that come from our collection. So it's going to be a really good celebration of our 150th birthday. Looking forward, we're also starting to think about the future of the museum as a whole. We've spent the last four or five years getting the, the income generation part of the museum sort of stable, and we've got a really good base. But over the next 10 years, we've basically got about 10 galleries that we need to upgrade and replace. The most recent gallery upgrade that we did was Southern Land Southern People, and that was in around 2000, 2001. So we've got a big set of projects in front of us to make sure that all of those galleries are upgraded. And we're developing a master plan, and there will be some community consultation around that, just to make sure that we get buy-in and everybody supports the way that the museum's going to go. The funding for that is going to be a challenge. I think we'll have to go beyond Dunedin to get the funding for it, and I'd certainly look to the council to help us make the right links there, so that we can get the money we need to make these galleries as good as they, as they can be. It's interesting to compare, to compare to, Toipapa presently going through a similar process, and they're spending something like $35 to $37 million replacing all of their galleries, and they're doing it over five years. We're probably going to have something of a similar scale, being honest, but we'll probably phase it over 10 years, because I think we couldn't possibly do it on that scale with the resources that we've got. Collections team are doing well, the education team have had a fantastic start to the year, and I'm really looking forward to a busy year at the museum. And once again, we do appreciate the support that we get from the Rakepeers of Dunedin, because without their support, we couldn't do half the things that we, we do at the museum. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? Councillor Newell?
Thank you, Dr Griffin. Just wondering, you mentioned in the report that you're looking at doing some filming for the planetarium with NHNZ. What sort of things are you going to be filming? Is it, is it going to be, is that footage going to be sellable overseas and promote Dunedin?
Yeah, indeed. We're creating a show, and it's, it's got a working title of Zelandia. And you may remember last year, there was a discovery, well, it's not really a discovery, but the announcement that there's this continent called Zelandia, which is the eighth continent. So we're doing a show around that, and incorporates some NHNZ stuff, natural history, but it also incorporates geology, it talks about the aurora. So it's a real celebration of this part of the world. And the plan is to put together a decent planetarium show that we can sell around the world and hopefully use as a PR tool. And in fact, one of the things I was pitching to the Tourism New Zealand people this morning is if they come in with some cash, you know, imagine doing a launch in a big city around the world in a planetarium, we can, we can help support that. So I think it is something that we can use to promote, not just Dunedin, but the whole of New Zealand. And it's a unique thing that we can do from Dunedin, because very few, well, there aren't anybody else in the country doing this kind of stuff. And partnership with, with people like NHNZ is really important, because we can't do animal filming in the way that they can, and they're amazing.
Councillor Vandervass?
I note in your report that you were well-stocked for the Christmas rush, and I'm wondering, as well as Christmas time, do you notice that you get a cruise ship rush as well? And, and does that, do sales through the shop give you a good idea of when you're getting these cruise ship people and how many?
Yeah, we do. There's a definite correlation when, when, shoot, put my teeth in, when cruise ships are in town, we see an increasing sales, both in the shop and also in the caf, in the cafe. We also notice a, a big correlation when the weather is really bad. So for example, last Sunday, we had an event, there were two, I think there were two cruise ships in last Sunday, there's certainly one, and we had an amazingly big day. We had over 2,000 people through the museum on that day, so that's a big thing. And incidentally, I should say that the positive impact of Tuhura has been felt across the board. We had the biggest ever month for our shop in December. We took, the actual taking is not the profits, but the takings were over $100,000, which for us is astounding. The, we've sold over 1,000 annual passes for Tuhura. You may remember that to try and, to try and, obviously, it's a charging venue, and we want to try and get locals to get a decent deal. So we introduced a new annual pass ticket, which is set at the, it's $60 for adults, $40 for children, and we sold over 1,000 of those, which obviously are going to locals. We've had very few complaints about the pricing. There are obviously people who can't afford it, and we're trying to work hard, particularly with schools, to provide access to Tuhura. But it is an ongoing challenge, because obviously we need the money to run the museum, but we also want lots of people to come through the door and, and take advantage of this amazing facility.
Great. So the museum is definitely a cruise ship destination, then?
Yes.
Is there anything that you particularly do to let cruise ship visitors know about the museum, like in advance before they?
You know, you have to, to really get into the cruise ship market, you have to kind of plan about two years out, actually, at least 18 months. And we're trying to sell things to the people on boats, who sell things to people on the boats, if you see what I mean. There are, there are people who sell tickets to people on the boats. And getting into their brochures or their packages is very important. Having said that, we're seeing a lot of just casual walk-ups as well. I think cruise ship people are getting more sophisticated, and they recognize that sometimes the deals they get on board, you get a better deal if you walk straight up. So we're seeing more of that. Obviously, the museum, our position isn't optimum within Dunedin in terms of getting the cruise ship folks to us, because they do tend to get dropped off at the Octagon, and they, many of them go off on the train. So lots of them, I think, start off at Toitu, and we, we get a relatively lesser proportion. But having said that, we do see a lot of cruise ships folks coming through, and they do spend money in the shop, and we do appreciate what they bring to the party.
And just finally, the marketing of your museum, is it done in concert with Toitu and the art gallery? Remember, we suggested a while ago, or there was an idea a while ago, that it might be worthwhile looking at having a manager with an overview of the, of the whole package? Is, is that happening, or are you basically still individually targeting your, your markets?
There are some initiatives that we all take part in, but we have our own marketing team at the museum, and we do our own marketing. For some rea, you know, for some things, that's quite important, because obviously, I would imagine, marketing the planetarium wouldn't necessarily fit with marketing the other, but, but where appropriate, we do go in and support initiatives. So if the city's taking out an advert in a particular brochure or a particular paper, we'll, we'll bring our material in and, and pay to be part of that, because we see the importance of it.
Right.
But there, it's kind of, I, I wouldn't want to say we can do everything together, but where appropriate, we do work in, in, in collaboration with the city.
Great, and thank you for being another successful cruise ship destination. We need plenty of them.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Gary?
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you, Dr Griffin, for your report and your update. Is there anything special that you do during orientation? That was something I was curious about.
Yeah, we do. Obviously, orientation tends to happen on our grounds, well, not our grounds, sorry, it's the museum, it's the museum reserve, it's actually owned by the city. So we do have a number of events, and we offer some passes for the, the students to come through. And actually, beyond O Week, because there are, genuinely, there are so many things for students to do during O Week, we actually prefer to do things after O Week. And we work particularly with a number of the, the halls of residence, for example, to offer events for them. They, they have, they're supposed to put on events that aren't necessarily to do with, shall we say, alcohol, and we, we arrange events in association with those. But we see the student market as a big thing for the museum. And actually, over the next year or so, we're going to run a number of evening-type activities. We've developed a new music-based planetarium show, for example, which we think will play well with the student market. So students are very important to the museum, lots of them come to the cafe, and we see them in there with their laptops, et cetera, using the Gigatown high-speed networks, which is quite, quite good. But within O Week itself, there is honestly so much stuff going on that, in a sense, if we put anything on, we're not sure that many people will come to it. And that's why we tend to work with them later in the, later in the year.
Sure. My second question is, how do you cope on the really large days, you know, the cruise ship day, Sunday that you described, in your cafe? Is that, I think I noticed some upgrading work.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's either feast or famine sometimes in the museum. So on the really busiest days, we would put through sometimes 24, 2500 people. That, for us, is a big day. And that does really put stresses and strains on the cafe, and we have to kind of introduce a queuing system. There are also limitations on the number of people we can have in particular areas. So if we get more than about 400 people, we have to, you know, instigate a queuing system. But being honest, that's probably no more than 15 or 20 days per year. So we plan for those days, rather than, you know, if we expanded the facilities, it wouldn't necessarily be the best use of our money. I mean, obviously, we can always improve, and one of the things we are focusing on now is, is improving the cafe facilities and the entrance facilities at the museum. And that's the next project we're going to try and work on.
Thank you. As one of your 2,000 visitors on Sunday, I can attest to how well managed it was and how there were extraordinary queues as soon as it opened. I have a question around your, and I appreciate this is not the most recent report you've written, but I note, I note that you have stopped including your website traffic.
Oh, that's probably, that's not a deliberate, that's an accidental omission, that's not deliberate.
Okay.
So I, forgive me, we'll make sure in the next report you get a full update.
Oh, no, it's fine. I just, I assumed it was, was done intentionally, and I just wondered if you had noticed anything of significance in a marketing sense over the summer, as the change of Facebook's algorithm?
No, we, we, we do monitor on a monthly basis, and I've not seen anything out, you know, nothing that makes my eyebrow kind of raise yet, but I think, I'm not sure we would have been affected by that as much as some bigger companies, for example. I don't think our material's being filtered as badly as, as some. But obviously, the next report will be helpful in that regard. But I'd say I do apologize for the omission, because it wasn't deliberate, I can assure you.
Thank you. No further questions? Someone like to move the report? Been noted, moved, Councillor Benson Pope, seconded, Councillor Wilson. Any discussion? All those in favour? Those against? That's carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dr Griffin? Item six, are we on? Yes. Item six, Aratai and City of Literature update. Mr Hawk? Apologies.
Kiura, and thanks for the opportunity to preview the report. There's been a lot happening over the last six months, and I essentially take the report as read, but some of the highlights certainly were the creative cities, Southern Hui, which attracted over 300 visitors, some locals, some regional people, some overseas visitors to the city. And the four days was a sort of a wealth of creativity, discussion, and inspiration from the various speakers. And the fourth day of that being the Aratai Community Hui, which again was incredibly valuable in getting feedback from the community. In terms of other events that have happened over the six months, I might look to Joy to perhaps highlight some in the community and cultural area.
Sorry about that. So we've obviously been working on the creativity and infrastructure policy and work around that, and the Ross Creek work has started, and there will be a report going to the executive leadership team with a proposed plan for that continued implementation of that policy. We've obviously been doing some, the work around semis, and reports are coming to that as well. From the Hui, it was interesting to note that from the Aratai Hui, much of that, the same feedback had come through the festivals and events plan consultations, so there was quite a lot of crossover. And we are preparing the, a report for the March council meeting and a draft amended festivals and events plan, which is taking into account the Aratai Hui feedback along with that consultation as well. That's just a quick snapshot.
Thank you. Any questions of the report? Councillor Gary?
Thank you, Mr Chair, thank you for the report. Mr Hawk, I wanted to first of all congratulate you on the Creative Cities Symposium, which I attended some of, and it was a great occasion for the city. But I had a question around item six. And it follows on from a question I asked yesterday around the art and infrastructure, art and creativity and infrastructure projects and priority list here. Did you have any further comment about that in terms of where that's up to? Richard Saunders talked about the Peninsula Connection as an example, and that the policies going to be implemented, sort of, the project's already started, it's obviously had a very long life. But any updates on that particular, or is it, do you join?
Sorry, that is me, and there has been a report drafted to go to ERT with the implementation plan and the prioritized projects laid out. So I believe that's going up shortly.
So when would we see that? Or will we see that? Okay, thank you.
Your worship.
Hi. Joanne Burney, Creative Cities, Southern Hui. I understood that we were doing some analysis of the impact of that, not just economic, but including any economic impact, and a little more fleshing out of some of the other things that came out of it. Is that, whereabouts is that in the pipeline?
Yep, through the chair, that, that piece of work is, is still in progress. And what we have done is, we have sent email questionnaires to all the participants, and of the data that we've got back, we're in the process of analyzing that, and so that, that's still a work in progress. I'm not, don't have a sort of deadline on when that might be, but I would expect it to be over the next month or two.
Thank you.
Any further questions? If not, would someone like to move the report? Been noted, moved, Councillor Lord, seconded, Councillor Benson Pope. Is there any discussion? If there's not, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you personally, Burney, for the work that you have done. This is the last reporting period for your role in, in, in leading the implementation of, of Aratai or Tuputi, as you have done its development. It wasn't always an easy process, and I'd like to thank you for your considered and considerate manner in which you managed to bring all of those parties together and reach what has been a very productive outcome. It's not easy for government to share authority and influence in the way that we have attempted to do in the development of, of our strategic framework, but I think that the results speak for themselves, and it would be very much part of, of your legacy to see that grow and develop over the coming years. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll put it, all those in favour? Those against? That's agreed. Item seven, Community and Culture Non-Financial Activity Report for the quarter ended 31 December 2017.
I, I think with this report, we take it as read by, by council, and happy to answer any questions on this one.
So questions, Councillor Lord?
It's only a wee minor one, Burney, but I'm just used to seeing these things going up and up and up, and I am surprised to see Olverston's dropped back 16% in the residents' satisfaction, or the visitors' satisfaction. Do you know what might have caused that?
Through the chair, the, Olverston is highly dependent on the external visitor traffic, and when we do a residents' survey, typically, when we have a high period of visitation by people who are not resident in Dunedin, the, the resident component of it is typically fairly small and, and can be easily skewed. So I, I would attribute that to, to that in this situation, where we, the peak period for Olverston is really from sort of October through to March, when we have the cruise ships and, and lots of visitation to the city. The quiet period is over the winter, and so the, the residents' opinion around the summer, that summer six months can be a bit misleading.
Councillor Vandervass?
Do you have any comment on the dip in events? It, it occurs that we've got a October-December dip there, when I would have expected events perhaps to be going a bit better.
No, I was slightly puzzled by that myself. I think we do always have to take into account that when we ask this question, people aren't just thinking about the DCC-run events, they do think about festivals and events across the city. But I don't, I don't actually have an answer for that.
Have staff considered that perhaps some of the events that we run annually might need refreshing or rethinking?
Yes.
Given that you've got to keep reinventing yourselves to stay relevant?
Yes, definitely. I think that we are thinking about how we can be more innovative with our events, and certainly that is in the planning, you know, in our heads to plan for the future, that our events are more diverse, more, these are council-managed events I'm talking about, because we can't manage anyone else's, of course, or we, or influence those. So definitely.
Are you looking at doing anything a little bit different, perhaps, for the New Year's Eve event, which has followed a very similar formula for quite a long time now?
Yes, we are, actually.
Thank you.
No further questions? Would someone like to move the report? Been noted? Moved, Councillor Wilson, seconded, Councillor O'Malley. Any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour? Those against? That's carried. Thank you. Item eight, report on 2017 place-based review. Background of a sort to a discussion we had in our budget meetings in December. I'd like to remind councillors that the paper we are discussing is in the public agenda, and we're not discussing that was, that was, that which was provided to you in, in confidence for the protection of the identity of people who have contributed to that work. So if you could keep your comments at a higher level, as per the covering report, that would be helpful. Any opening comments? Ms Gunn?
No, I'll just take it as read.
Okay, thank you. Questions? I have one, and it's around, I guess, the process from here. Depending on which approach we decide to take, the development of any new approach to supporting place-based community groups or community development could be a fairly significant piece of work, if we're looking at co-designing approaches with our community or, or what have you. There's a comment in the report that says that that work, the intention is for that work to be led by the place-based advisor. Are you confident that there is the capacity to do that?
I think we're, we would, what we were referencing is a lot of the research background, the options would be led out by that person, but this is going to take some cross-council work and work with our partners. So I would see that more as a, a community development-led approach from our department.
Great. That's good, thank you. Councillor O'Malley?
Just a quick question around point five about developing definitions of these groups. When, when we'll be looking at that definition, I guess?
We have done some work on a draft criteria, if there was to be a, you know, in terms of a grants process. And I think that would be coming with, sorry, I'm just trying to think, I had, had a discussion about whether that should be given to the Grants Subcommittee as a draft, have a look at first, in terms of the definition and what a grants process might be. So I just need some more advice from our governance general manager around that.
Okay, because we'll be looking, there'll be obviously, because it's place-based, there'll be a geographical reference, and then?
Yes.
Is there an assumption that they'll be, they won't necessarily have to be representative of whole community, but there'll be a certain size group that would have to be representative?
In general, and there are a few definitions, but no internationally recognized definition of place-based, which makes it slightly complicated. But in general, the definitions do relate to taking a whole-of-community approach within a geographical area.
So there will be a relationship to whole of community?
Yeah, rather than, you know, where the North East Valley Soccer Mothers Club or something, that was probably not a good example, it was just one that leapt into my head. Yes. It would have taken a wider approach. And some communities are actually using very specific geographical measures, so it's, you know, 1,000 homes within a set criteria, I don't think we're going to be that specific, but we are looking at what, what could be the options in terms of a definition.
Okay, good, thank you.
Further questions? There being known, would someone like to move the report? Been noted? Moved, Councillor Luffeysal, seconded, Councillor Elder. Is there any discussion? Councillor Vandervass?
Limiting myself to just a very high-level comment on this 85-page confidential report, I found that in all the years that I've been here?
Councillor Vandervass, the, I would refer you didn't refer to or discuss the papers that were circulated in non-public. You can refer and discuss the covering report, which is what we've been discussing up until this point.
My high-level comment was that it was very long, extremely repetitive, and exceedingly hard to read, and led nowhere. I'm wondering if it's possible with future for us to get a summary in the bit that we are allowed to talk about, and a summary that actually leads to some conclusion or some point.
Any further comments? Discussion? I just want to comment that I think this is really helpful. This is no easy task ahead of us if we're to choose to... This is no easy task ahead of us if we're to choose to go down what will hopefully be an enduring model of delivering community development, and a model that is designed with our community or ideally led by, by our community. So it's just a note for councilors, really, that to do that properly will require resourcing in the next couple of years, if we're to get to a point where by the next long-term plan, as was the intention, following the debate in December, that we can have alternative models to look at, that, that's something, that's work that will need to be prioritised over the next couple of years to get us to a point where we have robust discussion, robust options to be able to discuss at the next 10-year plan, my apologies, the next 10-year plan process. Nothing further? I'll put it, all those in favour? Those against?
No, recorded, please.
Item nine, items for consideration by the chair. And we've got, I've got a note around, following up around smoke-free social housing. Anything else that people want to flag? No? There being none or declared?
On that matter, also the question about whether we can put up signage without a statutory reason therefore.
Thank you. Always heartening to hear an argument in defence of signage. That being, that being said, this is, that brings the meeting to a close. We'll break for five minutes and be back with the Planning and Environment Committee. Thank you.